. Okay. Any comment? Questions?
Following that, then seven, what is currently seven B would become seven C. What is currently seven C would become seven D.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Any public com-?
Andrew Haskin, line counting manager, just for clarification, we're not actually renumbering the items. You're just moving seven.
Just moving it forward.
Seven B.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to redo this.
Shannon, Commissioner Sosa, I make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda with the changes of moving seven D to seven B. To accommodate a speaker.
Okay. Any comment? Questions?
Following that, then seven, what is currently seven B would become seven C. What is currently seven C would become seven D.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Andrew Haskin, line counting manager, just for clarification, we're not actually renumbering the items. You're just moving seven.
Just moving it forward.
Seven B.
Okay.
Okay.
You're still seven D.
Yeah. All right. So.
I'm going to redo this. Shannon, Commissioner Sosa, I make a motion to approve. Uh, the agenda with the fact that we're going to move item seven D up to follow seven A to accommodate a speaker.
Okay. Motion second. Any comment from the constitution? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the agenda as revised, please signify by
Order.
Did you go through all this good shit? Oh, okay. Oh, they had that, yeah.
Yes.
That's a, yeah, that's, that's back in there, because I don't have a problem. To.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five at the Lion County Administrative Complex. Twenty seven South Main Street in Yarrington, Nevada. There's a number of things we have to read at the start of every meeting, so I'll get started with that. Excuse me. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person. And the meetings are also virtual and public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment. Lion County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you are attending the virtual Zoom meeting, please comment. Public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hands and request to speak for public comment. To unmute yourself, dial star six. You can also provide public comment for the meeting by sending an email to county clerks. With an S at lion-county.org. The day prior to the posted reading date, be sure to type public comment in the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lion County Community Development Office at twenty seven South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada, eight nine four four seven. But all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to a planning commission within twenty four hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Greg Hunter Lion County Commission Chambers, twenty seven South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada. So on to the agenda. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item unless it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting instructions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board deserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may include or remove from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and will restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but will not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Okay, let's move on to our call. Commissioners Lewis, Commissioner Sal.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sarah Sola.
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Merritt.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
And myself. So that's seven of us, we have a crew on. And let's turn to the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Allen lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three, public participation. No action will be taken on any item unless it is properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lion County Planning Commission. But not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The commission deserves the right to reduce this three minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment altogether. If your item requires the extended discussion, please request the chair to a calendar the matter for a future planning commission meeting. The planning commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action will be taken upon a matter raised under this item of agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. So next thing is to review and adopt the agenda for possible action.
Just for public comment?
Not yet.
Okay. Oh, I see what you're doing.
Yeah.
Did you make, did you tell him that you're gonna make a difference, right?
Okay, we were requested by staff to reorder the agenda items. And what we're going to do is move item seven D up to seven B. And that's because to allow for one person is available to speak.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I heard you read the public comment thing, but did you ask for a public comment?
No.
On the first public comment?
I asked.
Yeah, that's right.
No.
Sorry.
You just have to ask for a public comment.
I'm probably for two seconds. We never have. Okay, was it a comment on public participation? Really? Saying no hands. Okay. And we'll move on and we'll talk about the agenda and again, we're moving item seven D to side, I'm seventy. I'm seven, anything else moves down to allow a person to be available to speak on that.
Commissioner Sarah Sola, I make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda with the changes of moving seven D to seven B to accommodate a speaker.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any comment, questions?
Following that, then seven, what is currently seven B would become seven C. What is currently seven C would become seven D.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Any public comment?
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, just for clarification, we're not actually renumbering the items, you're just moving seven.
Just moving it forward.
Of seven B.
Okay.
Okay.
You can see. It's still seven D.
Yeah, alright, so.
I'm gonna redo this. Shannon, Commissioner Sarah Sola, I make a motion to approve. Uh, the agenda with the fact that we're going to move item seventy up to follow seven A to accommodate a speaker.
Okay, no motion, second. Any comment from the constitution? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the agenda as revised, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Abstained? Think for a pass, seven to zero. The next item is five for possible action approval of the minutes. This was to approve the minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty five meeting.
A motion that we approve the minutes from April eighth.
Second.
What was that?
Second.
My Jones seconded.
Okay. Any public, on that? Questions? Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor of the approving minutes as submitted, please signify by saying aye. And opposed? Abstained? Okay. Passes seven to zero. Now, next item on the agenda is advisory bird reports. See, we have some that were given to us. Anything else? Seeing none. Move on to the first public hearing item. The possible action to further the recommendation to the Bird of County Commissioners for the request of C E A Dairy R N G Nevada L S C. For a conditional use permit for recommissioning of a legally existing nonconforming use consisting of an anaerobic digester for methane production. And to ensure compliance with Nevada Division of Environmental Protection Regulations on land, subject to rule residential twenty acre R dash twenty zoning. A P N dash zero one zero dash one 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 dash four four. P L Z dash two oh two five dash oh one eight. We'll step forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good morning, Commissioners Lewis Terry Ellis, Senior Planner, presenting. So the subject parcel is located in Smith Valley on the left, we have a vicinity map showing relative location to Yarrington. Uh, the subject parcel southwest of Yarrington proper, uh, north of. Highway two oh eight and west, but highway three thirty nine. The address is forty Honeywell Lane. And uh, the best access to the site is via lower Colony Road and Honeywell Lane. That that road section is in better shape than some of the smaller roads to the east. Uh, we will touch on access later in the presentation. The existing conditions on the site consist of an operating dairy. Uh, as well as methane digester tank and infrastructure. I understand the C U P before you is for said tank. Again, something we'll touch on further in his presentation here, it is outlined in the staff report as well. Uh, that this tank is already constructed. A little, kind of almost doing this in reverse. Uh, here are some images provided by the applicant to again, see those in the staff report as well as the attachments. Uh, this is a blow up of the six, approximately six point eight four acre. Uh, area for this digester operation within the larger three hundred and eleven acre dairy. Uh, so we can see that existing digester and then there's also some equipment. Uh, that I won't pretend to be an expert explaining what they do. But I do know that the applicant does have representation here if we have technical questions about the equipment. Um, again, something we'll touch on a bit more detail. Moving forward, uh, the site is not located within a special flood hazard area for the FEMA floodplain maps. Uh, so floodplain development permits aren't necessary here. Uh, there are also no public utilities in this region of Lion County, so no public water, no public sewer. Uh, ready to do some of our master plan designations, uh, first our character district, uh, all of Smith Valley's a rural character district. Typified by the lack of those public utilities as previously mentioned. And the master plan designation for the site is agriculture, uh, which is consistent, of course, with the functioning dairy. Um, and that operation. Now, the zoning uh, is. Subject to rural residential twenty acre, uh, it still holds an inspired district name uh, from our old development code. Uh, within the rural residential twenty acre minimum zoning district, agricultural uses, uh, farming uses, uh, animal raising all allowed. However, if we were to look simply at the digester tank operation. Um. We were looking just at the methane uh, gas operation, they were to come in and just propose that today. Uh, technically, this would be recognized an alternative fuel generating facility. Um, so the site is uh, already constructed with this use. Sorry, I'm struggling to begin to tell, I'm struggling a little bit with our. I'm paying it here. Uh, so the, the R twenties zoning district uh, would allow the agriculture and animal keeping uses. In twenty twenty, uh, the operators of the dairy approached, uh, then planning administration and county manager. And it was determined that the methane digester would be seen as being accessory to the existing dairy. And that no C U P or even administrative design review would be necessary. So those that digester operation that we see in place was uh, constructed with Lion County building permits. From the Lion County Building Department, everything was constructed legally. There is no um, record of anything being done improperly. Uh, as far as that tank and operation being uh, put in place. However, in November of twenty twenty three. Uh, the Nevada Division of Environmental Protections. Chemical Accident Prevention Programs Director. Uh, contacted community development, I'll refer to them now as CAP for Chemical Accidents Prevention Program. So the CAP Director contacted Lion County and noted that uh, they have a long checklist of uh. Of regulatory requirements uh, for these types of uses, both the uh, production. Of the methane gas from manure as well as the transport of said gas. Uh, that includes a conditional use permit from the local jurisdictions. Uh, so Lion County now is in this position and you might recall back the end of twenty twenty four. Uh, this, the same applicant uh, received the C U P approval for a methane digester in Mason Valley. And uh, there's also a site in Stagecoach. Where uh, there's an underground tank, so the methane that's being produced. In, in the site in Mason Valley is taken to that site in Stagecoach, all regulated by that CAP program. And now we are at this Smith Valley Dairy site. Where the building permits have expired, uh, there are still some improvements to be completed. So that is the stage we're at now and why you're hearing a request for a C U P. After the construction's already completed. So I understand this is certainly a backwards process. Um, but I did want to just make a real point of the fact that nothing was done improperly, there was just sort of an assessment from planning in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. That is now not jiving with uh, the CAP program in twenty twenty three, so here we are. I, I've included in staff report and again, here uh, some of the, the N R S provisions uh, that were quoted by the CAP Director. Um, and technically, the methane gas that's produced would be recognized as explosive and hazardous. Are there any questions on that part? I know we jumped around the presentation.
Commissioner Allen.
Just a quick one, did I hear you say that it's the same owner as the one we approved in Mason Valley?
Yeah, I wouldn't say the same owner, um, it's different dairy, it's like the operator for the methane digester system, the same representation, the same.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sarah Sola.
I have a quick question. Sorry, Les.
Yep.
So in November twenty twenty three, it would, is that a requirement that changed by CAP? Or was that already in place when they originally came through?
So I did personally speak to the director and um, he. I, I don't want to speak for him or cast any dispersions, but the impression I got was that this just sort of had been overlooked.
Okay, that was just missed.
Yeah, so there was no, there was no indication that something had changed. I think it's probably a process we should have followed previously.
Gotcha, okay.
Any video? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, looking at the pictures, I don't see what would look to be provisions for to do with any kind of leaks of from the tank, like it's two point two million gallons.
Sure.
And some catastrophic thing happens and that all pours out, where does it go? Just all over the place or a lot of times there's a containment.
Yeah, secondary containment.
Yeah, for that.
So I, part of the reason I brought up the CAP program is, I think it's. We're looking at this conditional use permit from Lion County's permitting authority and building construction authority. Um, we're not the experts in that construction type. The CAP program is, in the Lion County C U P. Not to minimize what we're doing today, but it is sort of a checklist item for them. So they will have um, safety protocols for fire suppression, for containment. If I had a guess, I would guess that tank itself is probably double wide. So, but I don't know, I just mean, certainly don't want to suggest that I'm an expert in, in the construction type. Um, but again, the, the CAP program will be overseeing the actual permitting of this operation. So that's going to be air quality, it's going to be pollution control, it's going to be fire suppression. Um. We're kind of following through with the requirements from N R S. So again, I, I know they, they are online, so they might be better versed in trying to offer you an answer.
Okay.
I just have a statement I want to make sure to clarify. So what we're saying is that at this point, the dairy has met the requirements of Lion County. And in the permitting process with CAP. They, we realized we've missed this step and we're just trying to, to rectify it.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so little, I, I don't know that they've met our requirements because frankly, we didn't, we really have like a construction type of this. Uh, requirement for this, so this was some.
It was previously approved, it met.
Yes, the requirements, yes, 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 ma'am, yes.
Thank you.
And the lead agency will be CAP and the safety and permitting requirements will come from N D E P on that scenario.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, as well as an independent review by the, by Smith Valley Fire.
Commissioner Jones. So just to show too that the dairy has nothing to really do with this side of the project. The dairy provides the material. To make this work and. And then. And then this other company controls and runs this operation.
That is correct.
Okay.
And thank you for pointing that out because I, I would like to bring that up. Um, and that would be, uh, Commissioner Allen, where, when, when we spoke of the other dairy and the operator, so the, the methane digester operation. Uh, which I never even got a chance to be really discussed, if we remember from high school biology, anaerobics simply means a lack of oxygen. Uh, so they have de-watering, they, they press the water out in most basic terms, right? And then we're allowing bacteria uh, to process that manure and then turn it into methane gas. Which is then trucked out to that uh, Stagecoach site. But yes, that would be why um, the same applicant for the two digester operations uh, is, is submitting to us on two different dairy locations. But well, let's talk a little bit about the existing tank, uh, it has a liquid uh, volume approximately two point two million gallons. Again, issued permits in twenty twenty one, although those permits have since expired. Uh, photos here again, provided by the applicants, uh, the one on the left is taken from the east facing west and can see the tank. And then on the right, that uh, that's looking from the tank uh, southwest towards uh, the, the rest of that operation. So the findings for official use permit are found in Title fifteen, chapter two thirty zero six. Uh, they are of course detailed in the staff report, I did include some summaries here. Uh, after this, I will have also sort of a summary on conditions. As well as some, some recommended uh, additions to the conditions of approval as drafted. Uh, but running through the, the summary of the. Of the findings, uh, the, the agriculture use uh, is in and of itself consistent with Lion County Development Code. And was previously determined, uh, the, the digester operation is being accessory to that agricultural use. Um, you know, we, we can maybe look at that from a different view at this point, uh, but that determination was made. The representation is already constructed. It was constructed legally with Lion County building permits. And then most importantly, we do have the CAP program to be the experts here. So I think it's important for everyone to recognize that Lion County's authority here is based on the N R S statute requirement, the local jurisdiction is issue some kind of C U P. So the actual operation uh, will be assessed for compliance by CAP. Whereas Lion County can work on trying to address impacts neighboring property to mitigate as we're able to. Um, the footprint of dairy is not changing, um, the, the capacity of this operation is not changing, it is already in place. Um, the county again, as I previously stated, will require additional submittals to not just the building department, but then also um. To the, the fire district for their own assessment and their own review. And then no additional infrastructure will be needed in the public right of ways, uh, again, I mentioned access previously, I touched on that again. Here in the coming slides. Um, so, uh. Staff is recommending some additional uh, language to be added to the recommended conditions of approval. I did read through a, a number of public comments and spoke with some, some residents. Uh, so we're, we're going to try and do what we can through these conditions of approval, again, staff recommending for your recommendation. Um, to, to address these, uh, while they're not perfectly drafted, we would certainly add them to anything moving forward. Uh, the first would be access. Though uh, the applicant's middle materials did note uh, using Burke Lane uh, to, to access the dairy. Uh, it's been recognized by the residents that that road's not nearly improved to the same pavement standards as Honeywell Lane is. Um. Like I got a lane or a drive incorrect there. But Honeywell is in much better shape, so we are suggesting, and I have consulted with the applicant, so they will agree. That that methane tanker truck has to use lower Colony Road and then Honeywell Lane. And not book. Um, and then we have some additional standards that are real pull from uh, from our industrial uh, code standards. Uh, for noise and for light fixtures. Um, I think light fixtures seem like something of a common sense round, um, probably something that should be applied. Uh, always in, in these rural areas, although we, we do endeavor to include this, this uh. This condition of approval for all new development. But light fixtures shall be full cutoff, casting light downward uh, to minimize light neutral off site. And uh, and then next, I mean, we're going to try and see. Um. I, I enforcement of noise is sometimes difficult, uh, we do have a code standard for it. Typically, the way this standard is applied, and we're, we're looking here on the slide. At uh, standards for industrial uses that are taken from Title fifteen when the use is adjacent to residential uh, zone property or uses. And that uh, threshold is a daytime uh, decibel weighted average of sixty five and a nighttime D B A, that's a decibel weighted average of sixty. Uh, the way that is typically enforced is that if there are complaints, the code enforcement officer will work to verify them. Uh, sometimes we do get people take advantage of, of being anonymous making complaints, but the code enforcement officer would verify the complaint. And then we would uh, allow the community to. Development Director to have the authority to require a sound study at the border of the property. Uh, that sound study would have to be paid for by the operator. Um, so you know, that's not something, I'll be honest, that I've had a chance to completely work out the details with the applicant, they are again online. Uh, but we did just run into this hearing date and I do know that we have uh, these sections available to us in Title fifteen. And this seems like an appropriate um, opportunity for us to apply that standard, uh, particularly in light of reading some of the public comment. But with that, I, I do have the recommended motion here on this, on the slide, I added some language in red, if you were to indulge staff and, and. Maybe recommend those additional conditions or any others that might be added. Uh, I am available for questions. And again, I do know that there are representatives uh, from the applicant on Zoom.
Commissioner Allen.
Just a quick one, but the applicants did not have a problem with adding those two conditions with regard to noise and light and access.
They, we did have a chance to, because we did run up right against this timeline. So I think with the noise condition, um, we weren't able to work out the full details there. Uh, they were amenable to the, both the lights and the access.
Okay.
I did make them aware of the fact that, that I intended to, to present that.
The noise is still kinda.
Yes, I, I think we probably are better positioned to, to respond, um, there. Yes, I I think they probably are better positioned to to respond. Um, there are some comments. That we received from the public addressing noise and they think the operators for the methane digester system did want to make a point, at least in their. Responses to me that there are separate noise generators occurring on that site. So the actual digester operation is not necessarily the noisiest part, but again, I I don't want to.
Right.
Really speak for them at this.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, of course.
Mr. Jones, so this op- this has never been an operation before.
That's my knowledge.
Didn't get it up and running before when he had it. So, you know, it's a twenty four seven operation though, correct?
I believe the digester could be, yeah, I mean, the trucks, no.
Cause I know, no, because I know that the dairy trucks come in and out at night. Constantly on night, um. The only issue out in the rural area is somebody coughs a mile away, you can hear it. I mean, that's just the way it is, you know, and that's that's something you're not going to fix. You know, just because of the 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 quietness of the area, um. The life situation they have out there with the farmers, that the thing is so big. And they gotta move so many cattle. Twenty four seven at night and everything else, then in order, I don't. I live right next to it, Wendy and I live right next to it, and I've had, I've never. The lights no bothering, so it's not like it's, you know, crucibles, uh, but. Might buy hers, but I know she sleeps like a baby. Yeah, so but anyway, the uh. In order for them, if I, are those considered? Jordan Downer.
I I couldn't really comment on those, sir. I mean, the the CUP we're we're reviewing today was. Based on that cap contact for the methane digester. Um, so I I didn't have any materials to review for the functioning dairy. Um, I I don't know that that ever actually occurred since the agricultural use permitted by right. Uh, you know, if there are reasons to, uh, you know, be addressing lighting for the. For the dairy operation, I I think that's probably a a different discussion, although this might be the right time to try and capture. Uh, you know, some conditions of approval, uh, I'm not really sure how that would work.
No, I was just questioning that because this doesn't affect the dairy's lighting, it's just affecting what we put on this building. When it operates, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the lighting we're we're conditioning now again is for the methane digester act. Also, I would take advantage of your comments, sir, to to just point out that the truck traffic, some of the. The comments were requesting details of uh the additional truck. Uh, trips that we see on Honeywell, um, it it comes up about one trip a day. So the the projected, the the staff findings and and the language says negligible trips. I can understand we wanted a more quantifiable uh description, it would be in fact, it it's projected at one trip a day, I mean, it's.
Is that a county maintain, is that a county maintained road?
Honeywell Lane, I think you should speak. Director Holman about the road maintenance.
We were just on that devil and it it's in sad shape.
Just ever so quickly, so the three conditions you were talking about will be in addition to the eight that are listed. In in the document.
Yes, ma'am, I I do believe you probably would have to crack them a little bit differently, um, but the. Yes, that those are the the conditions I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I was uh curious about the uh, I'm looking at this map. Do you or the representative know what this quadr virgin area is?
I mean, I looked it up.
Well, I see also the compressor area, I would assume that that would be the.
Noise.
The majority of the noise causer.
Well, I.
Obviously, it's not running all the time, but.
Sir, I I would. Think that sounds right. Um, but we also have the the noise at the dairy, so I. I understand we're here to talk about impacts of. Part of the dairy operation. But I want to make sure we're we're placing conditions on what we can place conditions. Upon based on what we're agenda. Agenda is to discuss, um, that's not to say that this isn't an opportunity to bring attention to maybe some practices. Uh, that we could better regulate.
But as a rule, we shouldn't just be throwing conditions on an applicant because other noises may be on the property, right? So we're just talking about the digester at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
When this methane is sold. Does the county receive any tax benefit from this?
I don't know the answer to that question. Have to assume so, but I don't know that answer.
How are you going to differentiate the noise and where it comes from?
The one answer this one I have.
So it gonna be, is that gonna be CAP or is it gonna be you or is it gonna be, uh, I mean, I.
So, so again, the way we we have, we've. Added conditions of approval for these types of uses in the past, typically more. Uh, industrial uses, so like just an industrial sites. So this one's a little different in the sense that we have an agricultural site. The way that condition is typically been worded is to place a limit. voted from code, in this case, is sixty five D B A daytime, sixty at night. Um, and then upon a verified code enforcement complaint, the. Community Development Director will have the authority to require a sound study at the boundary of the property. That would be paid for by the the property. So that's their incentive to not have this trigger, this code enforcement action triggered. I I'm not trying to avoid the question, I just. We just haven't had a lot, honestly, we haven't had a lot of situations that are that are completely.
I've done these tests, you could do them if. You received a code enforcement complaint and it was valid, you can have a test that is ran specifically for the operation of. That unit and you would take baseline readings for what was of the dairy and you would have to separate the two to determine. Which one is the culprit? At the end of the day, those are pretty standard. Limitations for any constructive or industrial work. By the EPA and you would. Both of them technically would be held. Responsible for those same limits, but you could narrow it down to which was causing the cause and effect. That's, that's what those tests are done for.
Just to clarify, um. I do live a mile west of the dairy, there is no noise right now, other than. Random moves, there's no noise. So there's no industrial noise, there's no engine noise you don't hear when they're using the big trucks, you don't hear it. So if suddenly now noise starts, we'll know it's coming from the digester.
I think this is the answer to my question here.
Gavin Henderson, Lyon County Community Development Director, I don't know if it's an answer, but as far as the talent's revenue question, we wouldn't have that information available. As far as the specifics related to revenue.
Could we find that question out, answer out?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sir, so I have a couple of questions. So since this was brought to our attention by another agency, have we at Lyon County made an adjustment in our building permits to put this? Caveat into it. So we are aware of something which come before us again, that we do need to have this C U P and not just pass it along as a building permit.
Uh, absolutely, I think quite frankly, um. I I've been here just about four years and we now require administrative design reviews. For all new commercial and industrial uses, so we. Quite frankly, I I can't, I don't want to completely speak for the director Henderson. Um, but in in the time I've been here, we've never made the determination that they did in twenty twenty. That a new commercial operation wouldn't require any planning entitlement or review.
Perfect. Okay, my second one then is when writing requirements or conditions. This is my personal preference, I do not like the word shall. You're requesting upon somebody to do something, show it should say must, how are we going to? If you're asking them to use Honeywell, how are we going to verify that that's being done and what is the conditions that you? What are the corrections that you would do if you found that to be a violation? And how do we manage that?
There's a couple of things there, uh, as far as. Changing the language, um. The suggested language for those conditions is just that it's suggested. I'm happy to to change it to must. Uh, and I think as far as violations. I believe it would follow the same protocols, it's would be typical, which is. A report to a code enforcement officer, code enforcement investigates. Um, and then there's an a potential escalating fine structure, um. But in this case. I would imagine that the the penalty would be, hey, don't do that again, everything start. Start that code enforcement action. I I'm not sure if there's something you were suggesting.
Well, I guess my question is in the code enforcement, if you're asking them to use this road, could the other road is not updated well and it's disturbing people that live on there? If they continue to use the incorrect road, is a, should there be a better and more particular? Requirement from them that they will upgrade the road that they're constantly using, because if you're only giving them a small. Monetary fine. It for longevity, it might be better to just pay the fine for years than it is to actually upgrade the road, so. What what are we trying to actually require from them?
Yeah, I think it's sort of implied with conditional use permits that the conditions aren't met. That the approval could be rescinded, um, I I think maybe you brought up a point that we could. Maybe sometimes just draft a new conditions for C U Bs.
I think I'd like to see some language that if a violation is brought forth to the county and we find that it's valid, there may be a potential for. Traffic studies and improvement of. You know, what you're trying to keep them from using and the reason why you're trying to keep them from, I realize it's an expense and it's probably minimal. And we don't run into that situation, but if we're going to put a requirement on it, there should be a reason and a way to correct it. So we're not coming back to the drawing table when the issue was arisen. We should have. An enforcement for what we're asking for, in my opinion.
I think maybe just in clarification in the conditions of approval that by those conditions. Uh, it's grounds for, uh. You know, us rescinding that.
Yeah, that and I would be fine with that as long as those, they understand the language of what we're trying to do. So it's not just a kind of an open ended approach.
Okay. I I did want to again point out that we have a little. Applicants uh representation on today and maybe might be a good idea to get, you know, some of their responses to these recommended conditions on the record.
Could I get one more question about zoning on this? This is not considered agricultural, correct? The dairy is.
The dairy is. To to talk about that at the beginning of the presentation, if if this use had just come forward on its own. Which would be a little. Odd because every no. If we were just looking at that use, we would have to look at it as the hazardous material processing. And it would not be allowed. The fact that it's part, it was determined to be, and I I don't necessarily think it was inappropriate. Um, to be determined to be part of a a dairy. Operation and agricultural use. Accessory to that use is is why we have the situation now. I I I didn't mean to evade your answer.
Well, no, I just. It's, it seems like to me this is not a a a pure agricultural operation, this is a fuel producing operation. And and should not be considered agricultural, it is tied to the cows, there's no question about that. And but does that piece of property should not be considered in, I don't think in in agricultural zoning. It's not agriculture.
I wouldn't necessarily disagree. This comes up again, if someone were to come forward with this type of use again. Um, we we one would already have. The expectation to be going through that administrative sign review, which is a staff level planning review. So we would be making the same findings as conditional use permits and then placing conditions on the use. That said, Community Development Director has the right to kick up any of those A D Rs into a conditional use permit. To come before this body and then ultimately go to their our electeds. I would have to imagine with the intention that this. Uh, as received, were we to be asked this in the future? That would be, I would think, maybe a a process we'd want to follow.
Gavin Anderson, Lyon County Community Development Director, that that's absolutely right, we do have that privilege on uh within code as an allowance to, uh. Move those A D Rs forward to a conditional use permit process to the commission. Um, and that would be probably procedural route, considering we don't have this landing specifically laid out within code currently. Uh, we are in the process of revising land use tables. Um, so obviously that that is a good opportunity to include this use into the appropriate sections within code for it as well. And I did want to know, um, as a standard condition of approval in all C U Ps. Um, usually at the very end of the conditions, um, I can read it verbatim, but basically it essentially says, um, what Commissioner Sir still was requesting. As far as uh not compliance with the conditions of approval. Um, it does have the verbiage, it says. May result in the institution or of revocation proceedings. Um, so we can definitely streamline that process and say, you know, it shall result in, um, uh. Removal C P or whatever that may look like, if that's something uh more appropriate in the lines of.
I'm not so concerned about the C U P, it was just the requirements that we're leaving it kind of open ended that we could request something from. The applicant that is an unknown, as an applicant, if I brought it forward. I would prefer to have like some specifics laid out to me, I think it protects the county as well as the applicant. Um, but if the applicant is acceptable to the current conditions and the verbiage that we have. I as a commissioner, I'm fine with that.
Any other questions from the staff? Did you have more? Okay, did you want to have the applicant speak?
Uh, I I might suggest that that is an idea.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Yes. Okay, this is Jamie Jacobs with Dominion uh Energy, I'm the project manager uh representing C A Dairy. Uh, R and G Nevada uh on this project. Um, regarding some of the questions that came up earlier, uh, questions about leaks, I will confirm that the 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 tank is. Uh, does have an internal liner uh to protect against that. Uh, we do conduct leak tests both with water and with smoke to make sure that that nothing is leaking out of there. Uh, so I I did want to confirm, uh, what was stated earlier that there is uh kind of containment within that tank. Um, regarding the question about the quadr virgin area, uh, the quadr virgin is is uh the the. Uh, basically the the name brand of the the upgrader uh that we use out there, the upgrader is the the equipment that. Uh, will take the uh the biogas that's generated in that digester tank. And will uh will remove the the carbon dioxide from that to purify it into, uh. Uh, basically transmission quality natural gas. Uh, so that that system, that that piece of equipment does have some compression associated with it. Uh, and there are also compressors. That will, uh, uh, will will compress the gas to to load the gas into the trucks. So there are compressors on site and you guys are right that 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 would be the the primary kind of the noise. Uh, generation, there's also pumps and agitators associated with this as well. Um, regarding the uh, the noise uh condition that's that's being uh recommended here. You know, this is, this is not not unusual, it's not not egregious, our our only concern is. A- as was addressed earlier is with the the way it's enforced and being able to determine that that are, you know. Whether the noise is coming from our facility or the dairy. Uh, if if it is the case that the the dairy is 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 quiet out there now, then 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 that that absolutely makes sense. Um. But, uh, you know, in order to conduct this study, if there was a complaint or something like that, we. Seems to me that we would have to take our entire system down in order to establish a baseline, uh, set. So that that's our only, I think, the the big concern with with uh with establishing that, uh. That requirement, but but again, um. Yeah, nothing we wouldn't be be willing to 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 uh to commit to necessarily. Uh, I'll turn it over to Gina if you have a statement or or anything else to add.
Any further questions from the applicant?
I thought she had another producer here.
I thought so too, but I don't hear anything.
Just call somebody else. Virginia, what I.
I'll just ask Virginia if she has anything to.
Virginia, this is Gavin Henderson, Lyon County Community Development Director, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you. She just texted me and says she can't unmute, so, uh. So, uh, she may not be able to speak up here.
We can, we're having technical difficulties there.
Can we ask that they be able to work that out with staff? You know, but we're being asked to add the conditions. Uh, to the conditions that already exist. When it feels valid, we're going to hear from from the applicant, right?
Right, is this something that staff can work out? Or is it on her end?
I'm not sure, I mean, perhaps this. Apologies, Mr. Chair, this is. apologies, Mr. Chair. This is suggestion that I think we already have applicant representation. Uh, who's spoken, I think he can accept the, the conditions.
We can accept the conditions. Gina doesn't have any additional comment.
Yeah, email from, from Virginia this morning that he, he would be on today.
Okay. That works for me. So I would have asked for, um, public comments. Either here or online. Yes, no hands raised online. Um, then I'll ask for a motion.
Are you gonna address this public comment that came in?
Yeah.
This is public comment.
I know, but we don't, we don't address public comments.
Oh, you could address it from the camera. It came in ahead of time. Yeah. Sorry. I would just acknowledge that we received a public comment from the planning commissioner.
Which one do we need this? Okay. We've seen several public comments, um, through email. Yeah, that will be made part of the record. And reviewed. So then again, I'll see if there's anyone willing to make a motion.
Make a motion. Based on findings, H G, I move that to planning commission, recommend approval to the board of county commissioners for the request from C E A Dairy, R N G Nevada LLC for a conditional use permit for the recommissioning of a legally existing nonconforming use consisting of an anaerobic digester for methane production. And to ensure compliance with the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection Regulations on land subject to rural residential uh, twenty acre, R, R twenty zoning A P M zero, one, zero, one, one, one dash four, four, B L Z dash two, zero, two, five, dash, zero, one, eight with the eight plus three, eleven conditions.
I second it.
Okay.
Commissioner Sarah Silver.
Motion to second any further, uh, uh, planning commission comments. And I'll call for a vote or a favor of the, uh, Commissioner's comment request as read. Signified by saying I'm opposed. Exchanged. Motion passes seven, zero.
To go.
Yes, still. Very remember. We need to best change the order of the items to accommodate the applicant. So we're going to move on to seventy and then return back to the list of items afterwards. Seventy now. So.
Yeah, seventy. I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah, it's many pieces of paper. Item seventeen for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for a request from Todd McGinnley for the conditional use permit for an aggregate pit on land subject to R, R ten rural residential ten acre minimum zoning located on Danny Canyon Road north of Highway fifty in Dayton on an approximately fifty-three point sixty-six acre parcel. A P M zero, one, six, dash, one, five, one, dash, five, eight. B L Z dash, two, zero, two, five, dash, zero, one, six. Stephen, please.
Good morning, Lisa Nash, senior planner. So today the applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a commercial aggregate pit. It's on a five acre portion of a total fifty-three point six-six acre parcel in Dayton. When we look at this now here, Dayton is, you know, just off the right mound houses directly on the left. It's kind of in a, a middle ground between the two. But, um, the site's currently undeveloped, a small pit that had already been excavated in the past, in the past with, um, and that small pit is within the proposed aggregate pit location. The applicant expects over the, the life of the five acre site to take out about three hundred fifteen thousand cubic yards of sand. Specifically though, you can see the triangle, the sites located north of Highway fifty Danny Canyon Road runs off to the west of the property and connects with it in the northwest corner. So here we have the site plan that the applicant has provided and you can see the green hatched area in the northwest corner is the actual proposed pit location. All four properties that are outlined in yellow on this plan are owned by the same operator and, or the same owner. And that includes the aggregate pit. So the only residential immediately adjacent is the property just to be west of the proposed aggregate pit. And again, same applicant, same owner is aware of it and is leasing the property. Oh, I want to point out, can go back. In the bottom, uh, right corner of this slide, you can see a detailed blow up of how they intend to come into the property, kind of a turnaround for both trucks and safety fire and where the hub parking and stuff. So otherwise this site doesn't intend to have any other facilities. It's just going to be operated only for the aggregate pit. No crushings intended, just screening. It's a pretty simple operation. So we have here a couple of site photos. Um, the one on the left is an aerial the applicant provide, actually the applicant provided most of these. That's the existing pit you can see on the left and it is in the corner, uh, right where the five acre aggregate pit will go. And you can see down in the right lower corner of the larger picture, that's where there are some residences. The one that's actually occupied is further to the west. It's about zero point six miles from the pit itself. And here's a picture off of Highway fifty looking towards most of these operations would be screened by the bridges that are along that portion of the highway. Um, you go on to the next. So in the master plan, this particular area right between Dayton and mound houses um, within the general land use north planning area per the twenty twenty master plan. And you can see it is located, the little red triangle is located directly between Dayton and mound house. And the master plan designation for this property is resource. I did have this in my report, but I wanted to point out because it's applicable under the master plan, resource lands are defined within the master plan. And they specifically say may also include private properties within community boundaries used for resource uses such as mining, borrow pit or gravel pit type operations, energy projects. So it's not inappropriate for the master planned type of use. When we look at the zoning, it's the blue triangle right in the middle. It's currently zoned R, R four, which is the fourth rural residential district, ten acre minimum. That, uh, using our consistency matrix, it also, uh, equibrates to an R, R ten. So it's still the ten acre minimum zoning for the current title fifteen. Move on. Oh, let me go back. So you can see, um, most of the large orange pieces around and one of the plans in my report did include all the property owners surrounding this. But the two larger pieces, east and west are both B L M. And again, that's a kind of that weird zoning is it's R, R twenty, but it's B L M land. It's a, you know, public lands there. The, um, smaller purple pieces just below my R, R one. And that fits more in with what's happening on the south side of the highway for the more populous area of Dayton. We can move on. Conditional use permits for aggregate sand and gravel extraction are a permitted use within rural residential R, R ten with a conditional use permit, which also requires following all the conditions that are normally required for an industrial use chapters three, three, six, and three, three, seven. So something unique about this one, we haven't seen for a little while up here is part of the pit area falls directly in one of the mapped areas of the Carson River Mercury Superfund Site. And, um, the other star on the map is roughly where the pit is located. Um, then if my slide is incorrect and I apologize, but the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection Bureau of Corrective Actions will require sampling and testing for mercury, arsenic and lead levels. David Friedman is actually here today. If you guys have specific questions for him, we've had a, a few meetings with him with the applicant and he also provided comments that I incorporated directly into our condition. So, um, the applicant has been working on their sampling plans and approvals. All right. So, um, ingress and egress to the site. Um, N dot has, they did provide comments. I included them in here, but they haven't gone too far along in their progress process. But it looks like they won't allow ingress and egress from the same location. So they would be coming in. The map on the left, you can see where they'd be coming off of highway on an existing exit or existing. Not really an exit, but what, uh, turnoff, thank you. Having up Danny Canyon Road, they would only be able to make a right in at that location. They would not be allowed to use.
Very difficult for a truck to make a right out.
Yes, it would be pretty impossible there. And it's on this, you've got the hill and everything. So, um, it looks like the egress that N dot may approve, this is still in the works would be going up and around, which is the right hand map where they're going to come up and then basically kind of come down through B L M and private properties. There's already a road there. They may need additional improvements, but those details are usually not always available at this stage. However, we don't know. We just know that it's unlikely they're going to allow any write in, write outs at the same place. And it looks like it's going to be a write in and then a write out at the proposed egress. Um, I do understand that N dot is not favorable of them heading over to highway. I think it's three forty-one. The one that runs north, um, to come out that way, which is why they've looked at alternates. But again, this is a condition of the use and there's still a lot of questions to be answered at this point. All right. So another issue that comes up with an aggregate pit, it's of course dust control. The water source the applicant is proposing is, um, the red star is an existing spring on the neighboring property. Again, same landowners for poles pieces and the light blue line is the water pipeline that they propose to eventually tee off of, put a new connection and use for dust control for the pit and the roads. They will be compelled to requirements for when we dust control and those details will be progressing as their grading permit and other additional information comes in. Um, they are going to require a permit from the Nevada Division of Water Resources, either as a temporary or permanent, um, application to allow. We did write a slightly unusual condition because they want to move this forward quickly. A temporary permit from the Division of Water Resources can usually be obtained quickly. A permanent one takes a lot of time. So we did write that unusual condition that we don't normally do where if you're going to keep the temporary ones, which you have the right to do, you're going to have to show it to us every year and we're going to be requiring updates or you're going to have to update it to a permanent and let us know. So this one is you went, read through the conditions, you'll see there's quite a few unusual conditions that we normally don't see in a C U P. So, um, as usual, we look through the findings, chapter fifteen, point two, three, oh, point oh, six for a conditional use permit. And I want to go through a couple of high, high, highlights. As I stated earlier, the use is consistent with the resource district within the master plan. Um, since we have a lot of conditions, the applicant is going to be required to meet all of the conditions of the C, C U P and will be submitting a further mass grading, uh, plan to be permitted for the work to proceed. And we hope that the conditions will serve to mitigate any impacts from this on the surrounding properties. Um, th- they still have to determine that site access with N dot and they're not approved yet. And before they can pull any other permits, those, those items are going to have to be met. Um, they're also going to be required to submit to Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, the Bureau of Air Pollution Control um, for the surface area disturbance and to, um, monitor air quality for aggregate pits since they are five acres or above. Um, and additionally, I just re highlighted, they're going to be required to obtain a sign off for approvals from the Department of N D P Bureau of Corrective Actions to make sure there's no unintended release or transport of the uh, contaminated soils from the Carson River Mercury Superfund Sites. That will uh, from our last meetings would likely include sampling and analysis of the soil before they determine how much, whether they have to remove some of the surface soils or any, any corrective actions there. That's uh, I also want to add um, I, if you're reading the condition from my report, we combined a couple of conditions. We had twenty at one point and we are now back down to eighteen. So sorry about that. Uh, it was kind of a moving target up till the last minute. But I am here and available for questions and the applicant has their own presentation as well. They will go into more of how the property will operate. And their intents for like employees and things like.
Just so, so.
For sure. So, so I just have a quick question to staff. So with all of these requirements that they're going to have to have from federal and state agencies, how do we make sure that line counting is getting this information and verifying that is always accurate?
That's an excellent question. Um, when the mass grading permit comes in, it will come into the building department. However, I will be copied on the application. And one of the things the applicant has to submit with that is this list of conditions and how they have meant for where they are in the process. And I, the planning department, myself or Gavin, has to sign off on their mass grading permit. So we are working closer all the time with the building department. And each planner, as we do a report, we're trying to make sure we follow through on the building end so we can check that the conditions are met as we intended, um, which I think is a good state. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellen.
I'll ask you and the applicant, the candidates begin thinking. So, um, with any project like this, we're always concerned about traffic. And I know in D T, it's early in game and they've not really supplied any kind of, um, comment that moves. Um, I go and look and they say that there's only going to be ten trucks a day, um, going and coming out. Um, it's kind of, I've got an inquiring kind of mind, you know, and so I'm really kind of wondering where the egress is going to be. I mean, ingress itself is challenging, you know, getting in. It's just at the bottom of the hills, you know, where the just past Santa Maria. You're going in. I mean, we all know it. But coming out. And then the second part to that, you know, when I'm thinking about traffic is how long is it anticipated that this operation is going to be in use? Because right now they're estimating ten trucks a day. Is that going to increase over time? And what kind of impact is that going to have on our already terrible traffic on Highway fifty?
I, I would say thank you for stating that. So succinctly staff has had similar concerns and it is tough when we're reviewing this without a lot of information. Um, I would like the applicant to address this and then I can maybe come back to it, but we have recognized those concerns and are aware.
Okay.
I have a question for staff and maybe this is for the applicant as well, but, um, as a side by side owner, and you can kind of see it in some of the pictures that the whole area in basically this part of the county is a spider web of trails used by side by sides, A T Vs, dirt bikes. And so I have a question about the security of the site. I mean, once people move in there with their heavy equipment, um, what's, is there going to be fencing or something to keep people out? And it's not only that, but to keep people who sneak in from getting hurting themselves on that equipment, creating some liabilities.
As I have received information from the applicant, if the site is already fenced and maybe that's the entire property. But I'll, I would like them to address that more directly as well.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I'll just point out, if you guys have specific, uh, questions about the Carson River Superfund Site. David's breathing from that.
So is the applicant online or in, they're here, okay.
We'll pull your.
Right in my mind. And make sure you, and, and announce who you are and sign in, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, Todd McGinnley, uh, M C accurate on the applicant.
I'm, uh, Chris Maldes, Heartfield Engineer, uh, engineer.
Good morning, everyone. This is a quick presentation we put together here to kind of explain a little bit more of what we're trying to do. Director Henderson will click along here. The project will utilize open pit mining techniques. We plan on using heavy equipment such as excavators, loaders, haul trucks. One key thing here is it's a very plastered deposit, so we don't plan on doing any crushing operations. Just screening. In the beginning, operations will be conducted by two full time employees. Anticipate hours operation seven AM before PM. As Lisa already presented, you guys, here's our site plans. One of the questions came up with the ingress and egress. Chris has been working directly with N dot. We submitted our traffic study and plan to N dot. We haven't got any combat back further from them as well. As Lisa showed in some of the slides, the pit is located out of sight, out of mind. So you don't have the visual obstruction to be there. Nearest residence a little over half mile away. Should be no noise pollution to closest residents due to existing freeway and geography and distance away from the proposed location. We feel that we have reasonable hours of operation. Low numbers of trucks, less than ten trucks per day. It will not be visible from neighboring residences or even Highway US fifty traffic. Here's one of the photos heading westbound and starting to come up the hill on US fifty. Showing that the hill there is obstructing the view of the operations. That's looking down the hill towards San Red. And then this is up, coming up almost to the top of the hill. Heading westbound on US Highway fifty. Same thing that Lisa went over was the ingress and egress. One thing I have for up and coming is it sounds like they are planning on putting a light there for Santa Maria. I don't know if anybody else knows about that. But I spoke with another gentleman who developed the property across the highway. Benefits the community, boosting the local economy, new local jobs. Support for local small businesses and northern Nevada residents. Increase tax revenue for Lyon County for sales tax from the aggregate sales. Why it matters, more jobs needs more money stays in Dayton, fueling our local economy and strengthening our local businesses. Having aggregate local here also gives us better roads, better infrastructure. Local aggregate provides lower costs for road repairs and construction, faster completion of set construction projects. Lower cost while providing need public infrastructure and safety improvements. Why it matters, reliable material source, means our street sideways, public spaces get the attention they deserve without unnecessary delays or high costs. Moving forward, keeping Dayton affordable and self sufficient, lowering our housing costs and development costs. I think that's a huge thing here in our state. Hauling costs are a huge portion of aggregate costs, closer aggregate equals lower costs. Stronger local supply chains, no need to rely on expensive out of town suppliers. A growing community that stays local, materials for local projects, stay in the community benefiting all residents first. Just to touch on the key points, more affordable local housing and infrastructure projects, making it a better place to live and work. Regulatory compliance. We went to the cab meeting. Also working with you guys on the conditional use permit, working with N D P for environmental monitoring, soil sanding, sweat and dust, working with Endoff for access, working with Lyon County for all permitting. And then water rights through Nevada Division of Water Resources, which Chris has been working on. He can touch on that a little bit more as well. Any questions, concerns, and then why contact me now?
Chris Maldes, Heartfall Engineering. I heard, was it? Commissioner Allen had concerns about access and truck traffic. We go back to the egress and egress. So we submitted initial traffic or trip generation letter and access management study with N dot. One of the conditions of approval is that N dot signs off on it. So they're, they're going to be looking at lumber trips, safety. You know, visibility, driveway spacing, that sort of thing. We're probably going to have a, like a high peak in the morning. We're expecting up to four trucks per hour in the morning. So our peak hour trucks is, that's it. That's our peak hour for trucks per hour. Pretty low, one truck every fifteen minutes. But yeah, we're trying to make it as safe as possible. So that's why we're proposing a write in before you get to that hill. Cause once you hit that hill, the trucks they're already going slow and it's a fifty five zone. So we're proposing a write in there. If not. Probably we're going to try all access from the top up there. So that's way past the separate median and you're going up the hill. That's like, yeah, that's like a mile probably past that. Four mile, a half mile or a mile. I don't have a scale in there. But pretty, pretty flat and visible out there. So that would be, that's where that egress access point is. You can see the storage unit place that's like, I think about eight hundred feet distance. So that's eight hundred feet distance is probably a mile from where the lanes separates. Did anyone have any questions about?
Yeah, I know you're just gearing up for this. What is the anticipated length of your your operation to go?
What was your total? Total, your total was like three hundred, three thousand?
Thousand cubic yards.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think obviously we need open up and start having money. But no, I mean, I mean, I think it's one of those things where it's going to be. I don't think there's any time limit. I think it's when he reaches that. Cause it was a limited volume by what's proposed. And if we need to expand it, we're going to be coming back to you guys. Is what's going to happen. But you could hit that three hundred thousand.
I have a big question. Two questions really. You, you say you don't know how long they'll be there, but one of your benefits was that it will benefit local development in Dayton. So do you already have potential contracts with any? So they're already requesting some. That was one of my questions.
I'm actually a heavy civil contractor as well. I do have some projects in the area that I plan on using the material for my clients' projects as well.
Excellent. Okay. And then my second question, one of the photos that Ms. Lisa presented was an aerial photo. This one here, and it says on there, existing pit.
Well, the property owners prior, whoever owned it prior to the owner now, they had done that to maintain their roads throughout the property.
Oh, so they didn't ask, they didn't need ingress egress to, cause I was curious, well, how did they get in and out if that was already there? It's a massive pit.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, we don't know.
That was all used on site from what I've historically found out.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. Going back to my first one about site security, I noticed on the documentation that he provided on page one fifteen summary of operations, the last one, number seventeen says property is completely fenced in. And I'm not sure exactly what that means because the owner of that land owns a lot of land. Does that mean there's a fence around that or there's a fence around the pit?
There's a fence around the whole property. But we, we could add some additional fencing. We have security cameras as well and entrance gates.
Yeah, I, I think just for the dangers of a pit, we're going to have to do additional signage along that fencing and then probably with how cheap wireless cameras are, or we just don't want people coming in. So we're gonna. No, I know, but we don't want to put someone on the fence line.
Yeah, so my experience is as soon as somebody notices something's going on out there, then you'll have the dirt bikers and everyone going to check it out. So, and then back to the traffic, we're talking about the egress turning right onto Highway fifty when you leave. If your client is east of your, how, where do the trucks go to turn around?
We're, we're actually applying for two directional. So a full access up top, except for we'd like everyone who's coming from east to turn right in there at that, that right in only. So.
Okay. Anyone else? So is there any public comment from anyone in house or online?
Now Lisa had David Freeman with N D P and then we have a crazy Johnston with Converse Consultants. You guys have any questions regarding the Mercury Superfund part of it and the soil sampling?
Does anyone? Okay. See no public comment. We'll go ahead and call for a motion.
Mr. Solow, I'll make an emotion. Based on the informed mansion findings of the following twenty it's eighteen conditions of approval. I believe that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners of requests from Todd McCamley for a conditional use permit for a commercial aggregate pit on land subject to RR ten, rural residential, ten acre minimum. Zoning generally located along Danny Canyon Road, north of US Highway fifty in Dayton on a five acre portion of an approximately fifty three point six six acre parcel, APN number zero one six dash one five one dash five eight, PLZ two zero two five zero one six.
Commission is still a second.
Give a motion a second. Any further planning commission comments or questions on this? Okay, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. On every, this, can you use permit, request, signify by saying aye? Opposed? Abstentions? None. So that passes seven to zero. Okay, before the next item on the agenda, which is the Comstack Devil separation, I need to make a little announcement. And disclose that I am a shareholder with Comstack Incorporated. And so therefore to avoid any perceptions of impropriety, I will be recusing myself from this item. And handing over the gravel to Vice Chair Sarah Solow.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you want to take a break? We're going to take a five minute break.
We'll be back at potential five.
Thank you. We're gonna bring this meeting back to um, motion at ten twenty seven. Commissioner Yu has refused himself, so we're going to move on to seven item seven B for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. For the request of Comstock Metals Corporation for a conditional use permit for a temporary storage of hazardous material universal waste consisting of end of life photovoltaic solar panels on land subject to H I dash S heavy industrial suburban zoning located at eight hundred Lake Avenue in Silver Springs on approximately eleven point three one acre parcel. A P N zero one five dash one four two dash zero eight P L Z dash two zero two five dash zero one one. Staffing port will come from Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, uh, it was Carol Seagood, planner presenting. Uh, before I run through my presentation, I did want to point out, we have ample representation uh, from the applicant. Uh, so we have ownership uh, management of some of the operations as well as their engineer. So introductory to the the geography here, we're talking about a site in Silver Springs, uh, eight hundred Lake Avenue. Uh, you can see the location on these slides of the Silver Springs Airport. Uh, this the subject parcels at the east end of the Silver Springs Airport runway. Um, location at the terminus of Lake Avenue, uh, southwest of the traffic circle. Um, for highways fifty and maybe five A. Uh, subject parcel is vacant. Uh, we have a couple other parcels shown on this slide and and they'll come into play uh, as we run through our presentations, certainly outlined in the staff report. Uh, a common ownership group in uh, owns the subject parcel uh, and seven hundred Lake Avenue and further east six hundred Lake Avenue. Uh, six hundred Lake Avenue. Sort of horseshoes and surrounds another parcel you see there just on the north side of Blake Avenue. Um, then that's those are county offices, so the sheriff's office has an office there as well as well as Dr. Holmes and her group in Harvey Services. Uh, running through some of the master plan designations, the the character district in this area of Silver Springs is suburban. Uh, and as we always kind of state when we're talking about character districts, uh, public water and sewer is available uh, in suburban districts and in this portion of Silver Springs. Uh, the master plan designation is employment. Uh, some of the descriptions from the master plan associated with uh, totally land uses in the employment district. Uh, include language about light manufacturing and a range of other industrial and commercial services and operations. Uh, this proposed use would be consistent with the language in the master plan for this master plan designation. The zoning uh, for the site is is M one, M one is an expired zoning district uh, from our old development code title ten. Through the zoning consistency metrics, which was adopted with our current code title fifteen. Uh, we convert the old names to the new, and in this case, the applicable zoning is heavy industrial uh, and would actually be heavy industrial suburban. So within that heavy industrial suburban zoning districts, uh, we do have a number of uses to require conditional use permits. Uh, this proposed use is the storage of end of life solar panels, uh, so the feedstock for this operation are are expired solar panels, uh, which per EPA regulations are characterized as universal waste. Technically, universal waste, uh, while it has a full range of hazardous qualities. Uh, these solar panels are technically hazardous waste. Uh, and as we can see from the image on the left here, in our landing tables, the processing and storage of hazardous waste requires a conditional use permit. Hence this request. So I've got a couple of slides here that will show both the subject site uh, and uh, some of those neighboring sites. Including, I think prominently six hundred Lake Avenue. Uh, so the proposed outdoor storage is at eight hundred Lake Avenue. Uh, this parcel configuration you'll see does alter a little bit from what we saw in the first slide. Uh, and I and I'll keep discussing that, but I did want to point out that that property over to the east at six hundred Lake Avenue is the site uh, of an approved conditional use permit. Uh, relatively recent, just June twenty 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 four, uh, after the planning commission had had heard the item. Uh, the board of commissioners approved a solar recycling operation at six hundred Lake Avenue. Uh, part of the application materials that staff reviewed at that time uh, were uh, indicating that this proposal for storage at eight hundred Lake Avenue was pending. So um, previously, probably even a year before that this June twenty twenty four approval. So the the applicant group had met with Lyon County Planning Staff uh, and discussed this larger plan uh, for for the use and the entitlement path. So this larger um a project incorporating multiple properties has been something the applicants have been in discussions with staff about for uh, for now coming on two years. Um, so this is kind of getting to the final stage here. Um, one of the uh, issues that arose uh, when talking about storing solar panels, which again are classified as uh, hazardous waste by EPA is that those federal regulations require that storage of this feedstock is on a separate parcel from the recycling operation. Uh, in addition, there needs to be a parcel that would separate the two separated parcels, so it can't just be adjacent. Now, those are the clumps is the way I reported that. They can't be adjacent, so as a result, this site really offered an opportunity to meet the EPA requirements. Um, and also at six hundred lake have the facilities required for recycling operation. As such, uh, the the parcels of address currently a six hundred and seven hundred Lake Avenue are undergoing a boundary line adjustment under review by planning staff right now. Uh, the intent there is to maintain that EPA required separation. Um, which now would be seven hundred Lake Avenue. And expand the size of eight hundred, eight hundred Lake Avenue. So uh, staff has reviewed preliminarily uh, that boundary line adjustment. But we've held off on on moving that forward to recordation until uh, this C U P process has been completed. Um, so really, after all of all of that language, they just want a larger area to store. That's what the goal is there. Um, these images are in the staff report and were included in the uh, application or I'm sorry, in the attachments to the staff report. Uh, it shows the adjusted area for uh, storage and I'm gonna have to apologize, I forgot my glasses and I'm gonna have to walk up there. The modified area, like Mr. R, uh, about sixteen point six acres. Uh, so this image does depict the modified uh, eight hundred Lake Avenue site. Um, there's also, if you can see uh, there's a little green bar that connects that six hundred Lake Avenue and modified eight hundred Lake Avenue. Uh, site that is a thirty foot wide access easement. Oh, there's the there's the map, um, we're moving from sixteen point six three acres. I'm sorry, sixteen is the modified, that's the purple line shows the the boundary line being proposed to movement. So as a a a way of internalizing the traffic movements from the recycling operation, things like the like the storage used at eight hundred lake. This thirty foot wide access easement is proposed across that that middle parcel, seven hundred Lake Avenue. So that once the uh, materials have been stored at eight hundred Lake Avenue, truck you won't be going back on the roadway just to bring them to the recycling center, so they can go back and forth. Um, I think it's important to note that the county offices will not be sharing accesses uh, with these trucks, they will have separate access. Uh, part of the development plan here does include uh, an additional um, office building on eight hundred Lake Avenue, that's a little purple box, I don't expect it's gonna be a large office, uh, but it will be uh, a requirement uh, of of uh, so initial use permit for outdoor storage to have an office as well as appropriate parking restroom facilities, et cetera. Um, this will also give them an opportunity to have staff. Uh, and if necessary in the future, um, any kind of security personnel, uh, the whole site is required to be fenced. So this is an image provided again by the applicant that depicts uh, essentially what are called these little modules of uh, prioritized uh, expired solar panels. Uh, so this is the form that their uh, feedstock comes in uh, on trucks and then would be stored outside at eight hundred Lake Avenue. Um, approximate dimensions at forty inches by eighty inches. The findings for initial use permits found in title fifteen are in chapter two thirty point oh six. And as we typically do, um, rather than running through every single finding, we want to just point out some highlights here. Uh, each finding is made, of course, uh, in in the staff report. Uh, but the use of uh, uh, still outdoor storage here for uh, solar panels to support recycling effort uh, is consistent with the uses described in the employment uh, master plan designation. State and federal approvals are still pending, uh, so that you'll see in the conditions of approval that Orion County business license is required, uh, the way we sort of enforce this, I I I've seen, I've heard some of the questions today about that enforcement and applying conditions. Uh, so I think we can do a better job in the thing of describing that. But the business license is a nice opportunity for the community development director for planning staff to coordinate to make sure we uh, receive confirmation of things like state approvals uh, prior to issuing the line county business license. Uh, as as is as is typical, also, uh, a separate and independent review by the fire district will be conducted. Uh, I know when we went through the recycling uh, operation C U P, uh, that was certainly a topic of discussion. Uh, so I do want to point out again, that is an independent review with a central line fire district. They will have the right to place their own conditions uh, on this storage use. Uh, Lyon County Building Department will issue building permits uh, for the building. The road department would issue encouragement permit for the new access uh, to the to the new office. And the commissions of approval seek to mitigate some of the potential impacts to neighboring properties. Uh, one of the the notable uh, conditions of approval is that a fence along Lake Avenue needs to be constructed and it's a solid fence, not a chain link fence with slots, uh, we know what the wind does to those, um, it would be a daily operation to fix that fence. So the intent there is to provide some screening from Lake Avenue, uh, there's also a residential neighborhood to the south of Lake Avenue. Um, there is some separation, there's some stormwater retention along the roadway. Uh, on the south side of the avenue, but that fence is is also not just for for security, but also to intend. Sorry, to provide some screening from that residential neighborhood. Uh, stormwater management will be uh, assessed as part of the building inside improvement permits uh, to ensure that there's no runoff from the site that have to contain a stormwater on site as as needed. And uh, requirements for secondary um containment, you know, that again is something that's a little beyond our purview in in the planning department, um, but would be part of any sort of state federal approvals. Additionally, I I did include a slide here with with some highlights of the conditions of approval. Uh, one of those notable ones being that that we're recognizing the storage use is contingent on that recycling use at six hundred Lake Avenue. So this is a little unusual where we have two separate sites and condition approval for one based on continued operation of the other. Uh, but we did want to to point out to the applicants, and they seem to understand that we're not approving um, just an outdoor storage dump site in perpetuity, this is specifically for this material and specifically to be used in concert with that operation at six hundred Lake Avenue. So if for any reason in the future that operation cease to function, uh, the applicant, I'm sorry, the developers, the owners, uh, have twelve months remove all the the panel stock from eight hundred Lake Avenue. Um, I think, all right. There are a couple of others items, uh, that sound study, um, we just carried over uh, the sound study in the hours of operation for truck deliveries from seven A M to seven P M, these are conditions added to the storage use that mimic the conditions from that six hundred Lake Avenue uh, C U P. And you know, w- we just wanted to ensure that the entire operation is functioning under the same set of conditions, even though they're on two separate sites. Uh, additionally, the the roads director will have the right to require a traffic uh, impact study. If uh, peak hour trips and these, this is sort of the the standard trigger on Lyon County for the roads department to require a traffic impact study. So peak hours are uh, seven A M to nine A M and four P M to six P M daily. Were those peak hour trips to exceed eighty truck trips? Uh, the the roads director will have the right to acquire a traffic impact study. Uh, and at that point, uh, potential improvements of the roadway could also be required of the applicants. Uh, there is also a trigger for average daily trips at five hundred. Uh, now that being said, the the roads director will have some uh, authority here through the encroachment permit process uh, to require improvements of the applicant. But at this point, the truck, um, the memo submitted did not indicate that we would see an increase in truck trips. Uh, I will leave this the applicant to explain, but the traffic memo that was submitted as part of the the recycling operation at six hundred Lake Avenue uh, was uh, drafted with full operational capacity at six hundred Lake Avenue in mind. Meaning they needed the full uh, storage capacity at this site, and that's why I mentioned that we'd been working with them. You know, for over two years on this larger uh, entitlement path of multiple sites. Uh, but that said, I I will leave that uh, to Mr. Door to kind of discuss if you have questions about traffic.
Before we go to the applicant, do any of the commissioners have questions? Comments?
I was just gonna comment, I, it would seem to me that the use of this site is not gonna be the same as it is for six hundred lake. You know, I can't see where sound is gonna be an issue.
I I think really just we wanted to make sure that they were operating under the same set of conditions. Um, so there could be truck movements, you know, internally, um, I I wasn't able to envision anything, uh, but I just thought it was safe.
A truck can have to be unloaded at a certain time, so you don't
Hi, Lewis, I have a question. So if the federal regs say they must be separated by a parcel and they can't be contiguous, right? Why is my first question, is it because um, there's a designated size for the uh, maximum allowance of how many of these cells can be on one land base, is that why? In other words, does that small piece of land really separate it enough to where it's not a big enough mass that it becomes a danger?
I appreciate the question, Commissioner Lewis. I I will leave the technical answer to the applicants, but I think the basis is is fire suppression and safety. So that the the panel stock is separate from the building.
So there is a
So that's like part of the foundation, but I'll leave that to them to give.
Okay, I'll ask them.
Apologies, I never had a good answer.
Sometimes a good answer is no answer, right? That it?
Yeah, I'm gonna wait for that.
Thank you, Lucy.
My name is Alado Igasporus, Go Hill Nevada. I'm the um say it's humbling, but so I'm the uh, CEO of Comstock Inc. We also have the president of Comstock Metals, which is one hundred percent city city area of Comstock Inc., so we're one in the same. Um, Dr. Fortunato Villamagna on on the Zoom and Ken Door, you want to introduce yourself?
We'll also need to make sure both of you sign in, please.
Ken Door with K O Door Consulting, thank you.
And and I also want to say that um it was mentioned co- um, common ownership. So there is a company called Sierra Springs Opportunity Fund and Sierra Springs Enterprises that owns the property of six hundred lake, owns the property of seven and eight hundred lake and owns the Silver Springs airport, just as a a few things. Um, and um, I run that company, there's two separate companies with different boards and different uh, investors, but there is commonality there. And um, just a couple of highlights. And just a couple of highlights, maybe first to address your question is, you know, the, the rules governing hazardous materials are primarily. Found a, founded with RICRA. You know, and the RICRA rules are federal regulations of, of pretty extensive magnitude. And, and really weren't written for these types of applications. So the state of Nevada, Nevada Division of Environmental Protection finds itself having to interpret RICRA. And related EPA rules and apply them to recycling activities. Most prominently for the recycling of lithium ion batteries, that also, you know, solar panels falls into the similar category. It's worth noting. That most states or many states, certainly Nevada. Interprets the rules and issues authorization through a written determination. Which most people call RICRA line. You know, so it's like if you had to go through RICRA. There's years of studying. Water table, site suitability, then the permitting is almost NIPA like, you know, it will take more than half a decade. So the written determination was designed to work within the regulatory framework. And applying it to something that's lighter, you know, than what RICRA was written for, which is much heavier. Types of hazardous operations. Number one, number two, this notion, so the way that, one of the, one of the things that enables the RICRA line. Is separating storage from processing. And, you know, it's driving, I know it's driving the battery guys insane. It drove us a little insane. But the, the point is that there had to be separation. It's very, it's very ambiguous and it's up to the state to define. So when we first started, we said, well, what about five hundred lane? There's a little county road in between. And now that's not quite enough. What about seven hundred lake? There's a big fence, and you know, so I had to go all the way to eight hundred lake to really, it's really a question of. The state being comfortable that it's truly separated, but it really results in double handling. And, and everything that's, that's difficult. These panels are pretty inert. We don't, they are technically hazardous, but they're really universal ways. And the state of Nevada, what we, we. Allows, like if California designates a universal, Hawaii designates a universal, if other states designate a universal, then we accept the designation of universal. And that's what we're permitted, you know, to operate here. All that being said, our intention is to receive those panels at six hundred lake and process them real time. You know, but there's a, it's, it's, it's almost impossible, you know, to perfectly synchronize just in time. And so having an extra storage facility sort of accommodates for that. That's why we don't see any increase in, in, in trucking or logistics. From what we had at six hundred lake. The same amount of trucks are coming. They're either gonna come to six hundred or they're gonna come to eight hundred, you know, and then we'll just transfer in between the way that it's set up. So it's a really elegant solution. Luckily, we had common ownership of the properties, though, otherwise it would be a quagmire, which a lot of the battery guys have quagmires, you know, with where, where to store the stuff, because it can't be on the same site. So that's, that's the technical part, I guess. More interestingly, just like to share with you that. The solar panel industry did not anticipate end of life solution. So, you know, the hundreds and hundreds of millions of panels that have been deployed in the United States. Primarily in California, Arizona, South, Southern Nevada, and even Northern Nevada, which is where most of the oldest panels are deployed in the United States. Are coming to end of life much, much faster than anybody thought. The EPA estimates about twenty-five to thirty years. We're seeing on average twelve to fifteen years. Today, ninety-five, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of these panels are going to be like this. Very, very bad. To the point where county commissions, planning commissions, Board of Commissioners, et cetera, are saying, I'm out. I'm not approving these new deployments unless there's an end of life solution right up front that we know about, because we don't want these things going into our landfills. That is very intelligent. It's very smart, because they will become toxic and they will contaminate the ecosystem once they start cracking, leaching and deteriorating. So that's first. Secondly, very excitingly. Doctor Villamunga created a process in a prior industry, in a prior business. Where we can cleanly eliminate all the contaminants from these panels. Basically laminants, plastics, glues. They're contaminating to the point where it's not able to reuse the materials. So we can cleanly eliminate those materials and then one hundred percent reuse the aluminum. One hundred percent reuse the glass, one hundred percent reuse all the residual minerals in those, in those tailings. So our operation in the little facility on that picture, there's seventy-five hundred square foot facility and one hundred and forty thousand square foot facility. We've been operating in seventy-five hundred square foot facility for over a year. And we've just recently been certified as the only recycler of solar panels. That is one hundred percent zero landfill solution, reusing and reselling all of the materials for productive use. That's awesome. You know, we're really proud of that. And when the large scale facility is up and running. It, it, the, the, the process that Dr. Villamunga engineered does one panel every seven seconds. So the biggest problem, if you look at like Copper Mountain, you know, down in, in Southern Nevada, they have twenty-five million panels deployed. Twenty-five million panels. So you can literally, that's one project. So you could literally put one facility, the size of the one we're talking about right here, down by Vegas and just handle their business for the next ten years. That's how big the problem is. California, as typical, and in this case, I would say good, usually bad, but as typical. Made it illegal to put these panels into their landfill. So guess where all the panels are coming? East of Nevada, east of Arizona. And so. Our idea is to put one facility here in Northern Nevada, one facility in Southern Nevada. You know, and then handle all the inflow that's coming in from the other states and capture it and recycle and reuse all the materials. Really, we view what we do as two things, or actually now it's three, I'll tell you. One is. We get paid to take the panels because they're viewed as an environmental liability and then we certify. To the, 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 wherever the source of the panel was, that the liability has been terminated and eliminated. Then we reprocess cleanly glass, aluminum, other materials, and we sell them all. Right now, we have about thirteen people operating the small facility, sixteen people between the small facility and sales and marketing. And we'll probably triple that number, you know, for the large facility here in Silver Springs. Last thing I'm gonna say is that there is silver in every single pan. So this is maybe the coolest part of it. If we're doing a panel every seven seconds, that would be about re. Three point three million panels a year from this one facility. That could generate over three million ounces of silver. That would be the second largest silver producer in the state of Nevada. And if we have a second facility in Vegas, we would become the largest silver producer in the state of Nevada, which, you know, from the Comstock perspective is kind of cool. So, but we're happy to answer any questions, you know, about the facility. We don't, we wouldn't expect any increase in trucking. Because it's, it's the same amount of business, it's just overflow storage, for lack of a better word, to accommodate. And, oh, one last thing. So last year, a hundred thousand tons of material. In the United States became end of life and almost all of it went to landfills, over three million panels. By twenty thirty, it's gonna be a million tons. You know, so it's gonna be ten times the amount and the substantial majority of the end of lives. Is California, Arizona, Nevada. The next oldest is Texas. And then you get to like North Carolina, Florida corridor. So over time, those will get closer and closer to end of life. But it's probably worth noting that even today with our little facility in Silver Springs. We've gotten panels from Texas, Florida, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Alberta, Canada. Of course, California, Arizona, Nevada.
That's okay. Do we have any questions from any of the commissioners?
I just have a comment. That's outstanding.
It's really exciting.
I am just so happy that you have a solution. You know, and that you're working on it.
Yeah, the first thing Dr. Villamunga said to me is, do you know the hardest thing to recycle? And I said, no. And he said, a milk carton, because it has that tiny little fin of little racks on it. And that ruins everything. And his process is designed to eliminate that so that you can then reuse all the rest of the materials.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is this a publicly traded company?
It is. Apparently Ralph is an investor. New York Stock Exchange listed and the, the symbol is L O D E. Or a complex load. And we have three businesses. We have the twelve square mile mineral district that is the Comstock load, you know, in story in Lion County. Half the property are in Lion Counties. We have the. We used to own the Daniel ass that you just approved the pit hole, but we sold that to the current owner, so I'm gonna comment there. We own this better recycling business now, which we believe is gonna explode because of the end of life panels coming out. And we also have a business that takes waste wood. The carbon in the waste wood, it makes low carbon. Diesel, sustainable aviation fuel, gasoline, et cetera. So it's like renewable, everything's renewable.
I have, I have one question, please. Commissioner Lewis, thank you for the presentation. You're, the project summary says the project consists of temporary outside storage. So. I, I know it doesn't mean temporary and the fact that you're not gonna be using it long. It means that when it comes in, it's only there for a short period before it gets processed. What is that time? I know you said it's seven seconds. Once it's done, but so when does it move from eight hundred to six hundred?
Excellent question. Excellent question. So if in an ideal world, in absolutely perfect world, we wouldn't store any panels at eight hundred. That's, that's not practical. Everything Kyle's production would have to be perfectly synchronized. And what I'll tell you is. The, the, the demand is not nice and linear. You know, it goes like this, you know, there's a, there is a hailstorm in Texas wiped out a whole panel. There was the hurricane and fires in California wiped out like a whole bunch of infrastructure. So we get lumpy business. But the, but the, but the, even the federal designation for storage in addition to the county. Is we can't leave it there for more than twelve months and you can't.
What was it?
Twelve months.
Twelve months.
Years. Cause then it's deemed as, you know, they don't want, nobody wants. Speculative accumulation of universal or hazardous ways. Nobody wants that. So that twelve months. You know, puts pressure on anyone who's taking materials in. You have twelve months to process it, otherwise you have to move it out. So that's even beyond our current permit. I can't imagine that any panel would sit anywhere for twelve months. Once we're up and running, our goal is for there to be no panels there and everything would be just in time. But we're. The thing that's hardest for us to predict is how the demand will grow. We know it's gonna grow ten acts. But how lumpy that growth will be is really the question. What's happening? It's interesting. When we first went to Copper Mountain. You know, when I was out there, there's twenty-five million panels and looked and the general manager's like, so how, how do you think we should start replacing these? And he's like, you guys should know how you wanna replace these panels, you know? So but what it was an indicator of is that the industry got caught off guard. Not only are they ending, you know, ending their lives sooner, but technology now has made replacing them even before they get to the true end of life. A practical and, and economic. So people are replacing things faster. They're getting to end of life faster. But, but we're just starting to get a handle on, you know, what the weight of that would be. So that's, that's why we need this. The storage is critical for that, because if we can't take it from them, they'll send it to landfill. They'll immediately send it to landfill and then the opportunity for the environment is impaired.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public.
Just one, I guess, does any of this recycled material go back into new panels?
So it will, yes, potentially. It's still early to say now, but we're selling all the aluminum to recyclers. We're selling the glass to recyclers and then right now. These silver rich finds, they have silver, copper, other materials in them. We're sending them to final refiners. We would love nothing more than someday in the future have a refiner here. That we could actually take it all the way downstream, but all of it, as we understand, so we don't, we don't yet have any contracts with solar manufacturers per se. But I'm sure that's coming. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I can get my brand new titanium roof in here without falling over again, Ken Door. And I'm the engineer slash planner helping Carl and his team on this project, so. I was just gonna comment as part of the applicant's response.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, just real quick, Carl, pretty much covered the traffic situation. The traffic letter that we prepared and included within the packet was originally identified for the conditionally used permit. To support the one, uh, conditionally used permit for six hundred lake, but the traffic volumes are not going to be changing. Pounds due, I mean, in the six hundred or if the. Flow bumps up and, and someone can come in to eight hundred. I think Fred explained that very well. Just a couple of other things. Lewis mentioned that there's gonna be additional reviews coming forward. Comstock Metals has contracted with an engineering firm to, a little bit bigger than my one person engineering firm. To prepare the site improvement plans and those will be prepared and submitted to the county for review by all departments before they actually. Do anything at that point. One, I think I did want to comment is we ended up, started out with two eleven acre parcels. Basically for six hundred, excuse me, seven hundred, eight hundred lake. We end up with a sixteen point six and a four point five, I think it was roughly. Why is the four point five acre, what was that selected? Originally, we were looking at just a strip, like a hundred foot wide lot. But the concept was that why not make the lot developable so they can possibly sell it off at some point in the future. Four and a half acres with a little bit larger areas, much more. Picturesque, if you will, for a future industrial application than, than a hundred foot wide. And so, other than that. That's about all the engineers to say, unless you have anything else for me.
Nope, I don't think so. Thank you very much. Appreciate the information. Okay, we'll take a back to public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to speak? Do we have anybody online? Hey, it does not appear that we do. So at this time, we can take a motion for the project.
Commissioner Lewis, I'll make a motion based on the aforementioned findings. I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the board of commissioners. Of the request for a conditional use permit for the temporary storage of universal waste consisting of end of life photovoltaic solar panel at eight hundred Lake Avenue in Silver Springs. In support of the recycling of the panels at six hundred Lake Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval APN zero one five dash zero one four two. Dash zero eight PLZ dash two zero two five dash zero one one.
All seconded up. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. We'll take a vote. So all of those in favor say aye. All of those opposing, aye. And then we have one abstention of Commissioner Ewing. So it passes six to zero. Okay, we're going to have Commissioner Ewing come back and he can regain. Control of reading.
Welcome to Vice Chair, there's someone. Seven C's.
Seven C.
Okay. Item seven C for possible action to approve the request from Levi Kate's. For a tentative parcel map to subdivide and approximately four point three zero acre parcel into two parcels. The smallest being five point three acres located at two ninety-four Sunset Hills Drive in Mason Valley. That's APN zero one four dash two five one dash two four, the O Z two zero two five dash zero one zero. Staff report, please.
Good morning again, Lisa Nash, Senior Planner. So we'll just jump right into this tentative parcel map application. You can see the property is located at two ninety-four Sunset Hills Drive outlined in yellow on the left. And in the little red star on the right, it's a fourteen point three acre parcel. So the applicant is requesting to create two parcels out of this one. Parcel A is gonna be. On the left hand side or to the west and parcel B is nine acres. It'll be to the east. And as you all know, a tentative parcel map is required for the division of any. And um, as you all know, a tentative parcel map is required for the division of any property into four or fewer parcels. The um. That's my name going to that. Um, the focus of this is to add a second single family residence on parcel B. And um, just to let you know, parcel A has an existing residence with city of Yerington water surface and an individual septic system. So the master plan designation for the site is low density residential uh within the Mason Valley rural character district. The zoning on the subject parcel is R R two. Um, R R two is one of the ones in the consistency matrix is the same. Uh, R R two is R R two, whether it's title two, ten or title fifteen, makes it kinda easy on this one. In this case, um, R R two requires two net acres and a street frontage of seventy five feet. Their proposed parcel map, I've included parcel uh should actually parcel A and B. Parcel one has a hundred and eighty two feet of frontage and parcel two is three hundred and seventy five and the acreages are much more than two. So it meets all the requirements of this zoning district. Here's a picture of their proposed tentative parcel map. Parcel A, like I said, is the one to the west and parcel B is the one to the east. Um, there is a fifty foot right away that exists south of the property. Sunset Hill, uh, yeah, Sunset Hills is the road out uh running on the west side of the property, but that fifty foot easement is allowable for uh access to parcel B per the roads department. They will be required to do an encroachment permit and a new driveway up to county code when they begin to develop that. So we have a view criteria for tentative parcel maps and they're in chapter fifteen sixty six point oh seven. And I went through some highlights on this one. Uh. They, it looks like the property did have a well, but sometime in the past, they got water service from the city of Yerington. And um, they'll, there is an existing septic system on the west hand side property that um. Has the water service and waste disposals provided by waste management. So they need everything required in finding A. Um, they probably. Uh, city of Yerington is undergoing some changes in personnel and stuff and has fallen a little behind. But they're not anticipating that there will be any troubles providing water service here and they would have the same requirements as anywhere else with relinquishment of water rights. We do feel this conforms with the master plan of low density residential and it it exceeds the zoning required for R R two. Uh, with just one single additional residence, it'll have minimal impact on existing streets in the master plan of streets. One thing uh we have pointed out, the applicant, a portion of parcel B, as you can see in your staff report, is within the zone A O flood area. So they're gonna have to, when they come in for development, provide an elevation certificate and development plan to be submitted for any structures constructive within that zone. However, with the nine acres, they can easily avoid that zone um altogether. Um, and then Lyon County, like I said, Lyon County Roads Department will require the encroachment permit. Um, otherwise they had no additional comments at this time. And as always, they're gonna require a plan review application with Mason Valley Fire Protection District. And they also didn't have any comments at this time. It's a pretty straightforward uh tentative parcel map. The applicant will be required to come back to the department for their final parcel map in order to get approved. And I have included some conditions, but they're fairly standard, other than this is the city of Yerington Water within Lyon County versus our own department or well and septic. So I'm available if you have any questions. The applicant is here. You have any questions and? I mean it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission?
Straightforward.
Yeah. Um, ask for questions from the audience or online.
There's a thumb up there now.
So, okay, that doesn't count. I'll see if there's a, someone's willing to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Jones, based on the aforementioned review criteria, I believe the planning commission approved the request of Levi Gates. For a tentative parcel map to subdivide a partially fourteen point three acre panel into two parcels. Actually, me two, one fourteen point three acre parcel into two parcels. The smallest being five point three acres located at two nine four. Sunset Hill Drive in Mason Valley, A P N zero one four two five one two four. P L Z two zero two five dash zero one zero, subject to the thirteen conditions of approval.
One second.
Okay, go ahead. Andrew.
You got there just a hair first. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments or from the planning commission? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of um it's the tentative parcel map. Please signify by saying aye. Opposed. Abstentions, hearing none. Uh, that vote passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Which takes us to item number eight on the agenda of the community development director for discussion only. Community Development Director comments and updates.
Brandon Anderson, line county development director. Uh, no major comments or updates at this point in time from the ignition. But we're answering questions and need to deal with this thing.
I have a question. Um, a two questions actually, but the first one, I noticed um that uh Microsoft have now purchased land in Fernley. Uh, with their purchase land in Lyon County back in twenty twenty three, January twenty twenty three. And we were all excited thinking, okay, they're gonna build a data center. Have they now changed plans? Well, how's it going? As far as communication with with your department and then?
Um, communication's been ongoing. They actually submitted an application for a. Mass Plan Amendment is on that for that property in in uh Silver Springs. So they're still actively um doing a project.
So there's expectation that they're still gonna move forward with something? Okay, okay. And then um my second question is regarding um an agenda item for the Board of County Commissioners on Thursday, um regarding title fifteen. Regarding a change, and I don't know where this comes from, but there's a change recommended um to title fifteen. And I did notice in title fifteen that from administrative perspective, you are the person who makes those changes.
As far as the ordinance itself?
Yeah, so title fifteen says fifteen point oh one oh eight administration. The Lyon County Community Development Director shall administer this title. So.
As far as the policies and procedures outlined. I don't have the ability to approve ordinances or any new language myself.
Okay, so what's the process for that? I know that on the agenda for Thursday, there is a recommended change to title fifteen. So it's, it says it's being brought by you. Am I assuming it's not?
That's correct. That that item itself, you're speaking for um either one of those ordinances. Those were um. Commissioner driven, they requested those at at one of the public hearing items. Um, staff has placed those on the agenda for their request. And it is the initial reading or proposal of those ordinances. Um, and at that point, we have to notice those items for ten days. According to N R S two forty four, um as and as they are the acting governing body, they're the final decision maker of that process. Um, so they'll have ten days, so we're anticipating. If those items are to be proposed at the Board of County Commissioners meeting at this week, uh potentially the first second meeting, probably the second meeting in June. Will be the actual action item.
Okay, so it does, in the event this title requires interpretation. Right? So if whatever these recommended changes are not clear to everybody, that if it requires interpretation. It says the director may take the interpretation or refer the matter to the planning commission for action. So my question was gonna be, is that then coming forward to us? And it really was a question for Gavin because he's the community development director. Okay.
And we're asking line county manager. So um I think you're misinterpreting that section of title fifteen. Um, so as it comes to um changes to title fifteen, there is no state law requirement. No county ordinance, no county process that requires them to come to the planning commission. However, um in the past, we have got staff initiated uh ordinances, meaning ordinances that staff have determined, you know, we need to change this in code to the planning commission. The two ordinances on this coming Thursday's agenda were requested by the Board of County Commissioners, and so that's why they're going straight to the board.
So specific commissions requested it?
Okay, so.
Okay, that's fine. I'm I'm reading it directly from your title. So so basically you're saying that there's there's no oversight for a change to title fifteen. Any anybody on staff can make a change to title fifteen.
No, again, I I think you're misinterpreting that that section. That section is having to do with uh over oversight over um specific regulations and how they're applied, not uh changes to title fifteen. The Board of County Commissioners always has the sole authority to change title.
Okay.
Any title in Lyon County code, it's it is.
That's what I would figure, but it it doesn't express that in total fifteen. It just basically says. Yeah, probably means to me.
I have the same question. Edward uh got that answer. You know, it it's just if it comes from the commissioners, we're out of the loop. That's basically what it comes to. If it comes to you guys doing it, then we'll put back into the loop. Is that, is that what you were saying? Because it comes from staff?
So the Board of County Commissioners can certainly ask that it comes to the planning commission, but um that wasn't the case as these were requested, so. Um, I know, I remember last time that we brought one that the commissioners had asked us to take a look at. The, this commission asked why we were bringing it, so um I. Want to find that out as well.
Who said that?
Yeah. Question, Alan.
Uh, would this be a good time to talk about um? The mail service between Yerington and Dayton? And could you look into possibly anything being done? I've seen post dates last month on our packets. Uh, post date was was April eighth or? Maybe that was gonna be. Oh, that April eight was the planning commission meeting. Post date on the packet was April fourth. That's a week.
Are you talking about?
I'm talking about we getting the, getting our packet a day after the planning commission met. I mean, the pony express went faster than this.
But I can definitely have these for the conversation in post office and figure it, figure out.
I'd really appreciate it if you could do that. And this month, um for this meeting, May thirteenth. The post date on the packet was the eighth. I mean, that's four days. I mean, I didn't get my packet until yesterday. And as a commissioner, I mean, this is a voluntary thing and I don't expect a lot. I don't ask a lot. But I do wanna give it the attention that it deserves. You know, my ability to be able to look at, I'm not a good um P C reader. You know, especially if it's voluminous items like this, this packet had four applications in it. I don't do well. I do better with with a packet. Yeah, I can mark them up. I, you know, that's my preferred method. I like having my packet. But getting that a day before the meeting really does a disservice to the county, uh to the applicant. And just to our time in general. You know, we we should be able to get them insufficient time that we can review them the way that they deserve. Um, you know, I know you have offices in Dayton. I don't know if you could courier some of them over to that office. I wouldn't even mind going to a county office in Dayton and picking it up.
Okay.
Um. That's one possible thing. But anyways, if you could just ask and try to find out why there's such a time lag getting the mail from Yerington to Dayton, uh why it should take so long.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to conclude with Commissioner Allen's. He points on that. Obviously, when we look at the postmarks, it's not a staff issue. It's not that they're not getting the packets done in time to send out. It's that it disappears in the black hole or something after it was sent out. So if there's another way to give them to us faster, because not only do we, I mean, personally, I'm sure I always feel the same. Not only do I like to review them multiple times, but I also, if I can, go out, like to go out and and visit the site. So I see with my own eyes what it is and you know, fall asleep and my mail doesn't show up until the afternoon, like two or three o'clock. So that's when I actually got this packet yesterday. So if something can be explored, that'd be great. Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
Commissioner, let me show you guys. You know, we have, all of us have sheriffs who live in our area. They'll have to go home from here. You know, I I have the, a one that comes out right close to our home. If they, you know, I don't think that Sheriff Pope would mind if they would just stop by and grab these and bring them over to us. Yeah, I don't know if that's, hey, he's my running cat. You don't want, you don't want him to run that, Sarah, town manager? Yeah.
Trying to clean the room. I know you have to print them off, but at least you could, you could start with the addresses and what they are and tell you to get the hard copies. But yes, I just get it. I know, it was a hundred and fifty eight pages I put it. I didn't get mine till yesterday either, but. I actually, I actually come over and pick them up from Brandy. She usually has them ready on the Thursday priority and I usually come pick us up.
To us, I mean, and the county manager has even delivered them to my house, you know.
But I can speak for the post office where we're at. They just got seven pallets of Amazon packages dumped on them yesterday. And they were scrambling to call, I really to come pick those up so they could get to the mail. Yeah, so there's, there's, they got problems.
No, there is definitely opportunities.
I call them challenges and I think they could need them.
Any other questions for Director Henderson? See, none. I will move on to item nine, Commissioner comments and agenda requests.
I do, I would just wanna uh thank Wendy for her input down there. She she kind of knows forensic, looking at everything. Sometimes there's some information that we feel like we're missing to make some of these decisions. Uh, I will see, I I'm sure, I don't feel you will be able to, I will be at the commissioners meeting because I have certain feelings about these changes. And since we have them all set here, it doesn't make much sense for me to blow it up here. So I will be at the main to discuss those.
Okay. All right, I'll move on to item ten, public participation. Again, no action will be taken on any item. Until it's properly agenda is, members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes for person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action will be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken.
Not a timer.
I'm coming down here to be a member of the public.
Okay.
Landing commission.
Wendy.
Three minutes.
Wendy in Smith Valley, um. I just wanted to address something that's kind of near and dear to me as a Smith Valley resident. Uh, Lyon County currently has a huge deficit. And it's heading towards double digit deficits. We're nearly, nearly at ten million. Lyon County has a huge land mass and is located, as we know, close to Reno and Carson. We're a very, very inviting area for businesses. I recently had a large business out of California come to me in my day job, asking for eighty acres of land uh that they wanted to get in Douglas County. And I said, it's a lot cheaper in Lyon County. And they said, no, it's too difficult to do business in Lyon County. I left it alone. How can we reduce or eliminate the county's deficit? We can bring new development and businesses and homes and people. It appears unfortunately that Lyon County only uses certain developers and certain contractors, certain builders affiliated with certain people. If someone outside of this certain group proposes any kind of development, it'll be run through a ringer. And this has a lot to do with the recent uh requests, or actually not recent, it's been over eight months now. They started in October to bring C pace to Lyon County. Every time the project is brought forward, bringing necessary steps, it gets shut down. This is apparent with the C pace proposal. Lyon County residents need to be aware of the inability.
Lyon County residents need to be aware of the inability for outsiders to come to Lyon County and develop any kind of businesses. Until this group is penetrated, Lyon County will continue to dip deeper into the red with a deficit. Maybe this is the legacy that the controller is looking for in his current reign, but adapted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to item eleven, adjournment, and eleven twenty seven.
Thank you, good meeting.